Larry, you'll do the invocation.
Sure.
Okay, so no box came up. I'm live, okay.
We're live. All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Tuesday, July 20th, 2021, public meeting of the Board of Garrett County Commissioners. I want to welcome all of our guests. Thanks for coming today, and welcome everyone who's tuning in live on Facebook. If everyone would please stand with me for the pledge, and then Commissioner Titchinal will give the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you join me in order for?
Precious and heavenly Father, Lord, we just come to you today just thanking you for the day that you've given us. Lord, we thank you for each and every person that's here today, and we just ask your guidance and direction over this meeting. And, Lord, we'll just continue to praise you and glorify you for all that you do for us each and every day. In your precious holy son's name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. Mr. Knoll, any additions, corrections, or changes to the public meeting agenda?
No, sir, Lord, not.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the public meeting agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion of second, agenda approved by mutual consent. Everybody got a copy of the minutes in advance in the meeting, or any concerns with the minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion of second, minutes approved by mutual consent. First item on the agenda is program open space recommendations. We have $298,124 in program open space this year, and are planning on getting an additional one-time funding of $1 million for that as well. Mr. Knoll, what do you have for us?
Yes, sir, sir. I'll go over both funding sources, but the first one will be program open space, and I will ask for a motion to approve these submittals. So for the town of Oakland, we have a request for $100,397, and that will include money for upgrades to the pavilion, tennis courts and basketball court resurfacing, garage doors for the Mount Fresh Pavilion, as well as a portion of the lighting for the Oakland Youth Baseball League Field at Broadford Park. Garrett College has a request for $45,825, and this is for ball field upgrades. The Garrett County Board of Education has a request for $82,312, and this is a request to replace existing playground equipment at Gock Glades Elementary School. There's a request from the McHenry Lions Club for the Lions Park, and it totaled $69,500, and that is for a pavilion expansion, and $45,000 for a bicycle pump track construction. And those total $298,124.
Questions on those for the POS money? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the recommended projects for program open space for a total of $298,124.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion of second, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And how about the other million dollars?
So this year, the legislature has awarded supplemental money that will run through program open space, and the Garrett County Board receiving a million dollars in this program. So the recommended programs, proposed funding for that million dollars is as follows. The town of Accident, $55,478 for playground equipment and improvements. The town of Oakland, an additional $246,043, and this will go towards some additional work at Broadford Park for paving and boathouse renovations and pavilions, money to the B&amp;O Museum for the caboose repairs, Glades Park for tennis and basketball court resurfacing, and an additional $82,000 to finish the lighting for the Broadford Park youth baseball fields. We're going to supplement the McHenry Lions Club additional $7,732 to finish their pavilion expansion and the pump track construction. The town of Locklin will receive $314,820. $310,000 of that is for the soccer field lighting and some signage for the park itself. The town of Grantsville will receive $179,500. $155,000 of that will go for upgrading the lights on the ball fields to LED lighting, as well as some pavilion repairs and some work on the restrooms and the pavilion areas. The town of Mountain Lake Park will receive $20,500, and that's for basketball court improvements. Garrett Trails will receive $33,369, and this is two trails for work at the Trails of Fork Run, including a bridge, some signage, interpretive panels, and some security cameras in the park area. Garrett County is seeking, will receive $94,000, and that is for recreational facility design and some planning for Fork Run. The town of Deer Park will receive $4,000, and this is for paving at their community center. The town of Kits Miller will receive $3,051, and this is for some refurbishing on their fish pond at the town pond, some bleachers at the ball field, and some picnic tables. And Alton Community Center will receive $39,700, and this is for repairs to the community center in Alton, roof repairs, sidewalks and ramps and benches, for a total of $1 million. So these will be submitted to the state for final approval, so at this point they are recommendations.
Okay, and we'll take no further action on that until all of that is finalized. Those are great projects spread out all over the county, impact communities all over the county, and I know we're very excited about the opportunity to fund those, especially for the youth, but great stuff. Anybody have any comments on that? Okay, next order of business, we have some bids to take care of. I'm assuming, Mr. Knoll, you're going to take these as well?
Yes, sir. So this is bid number 21-0701. This is the Mountain Lake Park Water System West Second Avenue Waterline Replacement. There were three bids received for this project. Frank Arnold Contractors in the amount of $97,564.70, D&amp;M Contracting in the amount of $134,000, and Excavating Associates in the amount of $136,476. The purchasing department is recommending awarding the bid to Frank Arnold Contractors in the amount of $97,564.70.
Questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to accept bid number 21-0701, awarded to Frank Arnold Contractors, the amount $97,564.70 for the Mountain Lake Park Water System West Second Avenue Waterline Replacement?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion of second, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving right along, next item of business, I'd like to welcome Representative from Frostburg for the Frostburg Physicians Assistant Program Presentation. And Carrie?
Yes.
All right, well, welcome, and thanks for coming.
Thank you so much, and the best place to stay on?
Probably at the podium.
So thank you so much, Commissioners, for allowing us to be here and giving us the time. I would certainly like to introduce my colleagues, our Program Director, Dr. Ian O'Donoghue, and our Clinical Director of Clinical Education, Elizabeth Budney, are here with me as well. So just to give you a little bit of information about our PA program out of Frostburg State University, about eight years ago, Dr. Sean LaCalle came to Frostburg to address the healthcare shortage in Western Maryland, and Frostburg did an extensive feasibility study and certainly acknowledged the gap of healthcare in Western Maryland. And so we were certainly grateful for him spearheading the program through Frostburg State University. You could go ahead and advance. Thank you. So just to give you a little bit of information about PAs and the profession in general, PAs are medical professionals who diagnose illness, develop and manage treatment plans, prescribe medications, and often serve as a patient's principal healthcare provider. With thousands of hours of medical training, PAs are versatile and collaborative. PAs practice in every state and in every medical setting and specialty, improving healthcare access and quality. Okay, yes, thank you. So we are really proud to mention that we've just graduated our inaugural cohort back in May, so 25 PA students who had started with us in May of 2019, recently graduated our 24-month program and are now out practicing, many of which had come from across the country and have decided to stay local, which is part of our presentation and what we can bring to Garrett County as a program. So our comprehensive educational program prepares PAs for a team-based approach to providing high-quality, patient-centered medical care. Generalist medical education that PAs receive makes the profession unequivocally flexible and adaptable, evolving in the needs of the U.S. healthcare system. First year is a classroom setting, so for the first 12 months, the 25 students are housed in our, USMH is the hub for our program, so in Hagerstown. The 25 students are with us for a didactic curriculum, and then the second part of the program actually sends them out into the local communities for 11 months of clinical rotations, and really getting into the hands-on and really developing rapport with local healthcare organizations as well. And we can advance. So what is the vision of our particular program? And every program across the country and the world has their own identity, and we feel that we are very unique to meet the needs of Western Maryland. So Frostburg State University's PA Studies Program will educate a PA workforce committed to excellence, compassion, and patient-centered care to serve rural and medically underserved areas in Maryland and beyond. So we actually seek, through our admissions process, we have a holistic admissions process, but we actually seek and give additional credit to students that are from rural communities because we know that likely that's where they're going to be comfortable landing as well. So I just wanted to, again, give you a good idea as to the type of students that we are recruiting, and those students we give, anybody from four counties, Garrett County, Allegheny County, Washington County, and Frederick County, any student that applies to our program gets an automatic interview from those four counties, because we are so confident that if we bring in local students, they will then flourish in Western Maryland, which is exactly what our program is here for. So just to give you an ideas to the rigor of our admissions process, so our very first cohort, as you can see, we had 352 applicants, and this year, we are only three months into our application cycle, and you see that we have almost 600 applicants. So these are applicants from across the country that are fighting for 25 seats in our program. So we are actually on cue to have about 1,200 applications to our program. So this profession is certainly growing, and we're certainly grateful to be a part of it. So again, I mentioned about our interview process and how we really, we want to bring in local students. We want to help educate them, and then we want to put them in the Western Maryland region to practice medicine. So again, the scoring of our holistic admissions process, we give additional points for students that are from medically underserved communities. We give, any Frostburg graduate gets additional points, anybody from 120-mile radius of main campus in Frostburg, Maryland, they get additional points. If they have graduated from an institution within 120 miles, they get additional points. So I'm just speaking to that repeatedly because I want you to appreciate that we are trying to recruit people from your community. So this brings us to our second year. Our second year, as I mentioned, is essentially our students going out into the local communities under the guidance of fellow healthcare providers, so physicians, DOs, nurse practitioners, and PAs as well. And we can't accomplish that second year of our program without medical partners, and that is part of the reason that we are here, is because we would really like for you to help spread the word to Garrett Regional Medical Center and to any local healthcare provider that our program exists and that our goal is to then have those students fill the healthcare gap in Garrett County and Western Maryland as a whole. So right now, we have Garrett Regional, who has agreed to take one of our students for one rotation, which is a four-week timeframe. So the student is in the emergency room at Garrett County, learning for four weeks. And then also Dr. Todd Feathers has blessed us with two orthopedic electives. So those would be students that have a specialized interest in orthopedics. So where do our students come from and where are they going? And I bring this slide to your attention because we had in our inaugural cohort that we just graduated in May of this year, we welcomed 25 students, and 10 of them, and they are from all over the country, so Iowa, we had a student from Iowa, we had a student from Michigan, several from New Jersey, from Ohio, and they came to Western Maryland with no intention of staying. And guess what? They're staying. They're buying lots to build houses, they're signing contracts in Washington County and Frederick County, Allegheny County. So they are settling, that wasn't their intention, but this is a really pivotal time in these students' lives, where oftentimes where they rotate and do their supervised clinical education experiences is oftentimes where they land. So they meet people, they become an integral part of the community, and they stay. So I bring that to your attention because why is that important to you? Back in March of this year, the Cumberland Times had an article that was titled "The RX for Rural Health," and it mentioned Allegheny County and Garrett County, and how those rural communities really do have a healthcare shortage, that nearly three times more doctors are in metropolitan areas than in rural areas. So what does that do for the people of your community in Garrett County? It leaves a gap, they have to go to Morgantown for medical care, they have to come to Hagerstown for medical care, and then what does that do? Is it creates a delay to medical care, and certainly with some conditions, we really don't want to have a delay to healthcare. So if our students were to rotate in Garrett County, because we have been welcomed in more clinical settings, there would be a high likelihood that our students would fall in love with Garrett County, maybe even fall in love with a significant other in Garrett County, and tend to stay here. And then what does that mean for your economy in Garrett County? Well, it's a pretty well-paying position, so they would give back in buying houses, they would give back in paying taxes, they would give back in buying automobiles and eating at restaurants, and they would certainly give back to your local community in many ways economically as well. So I'll highlight one of our star students who just graduated, and he indeed was from Garrett County, certainly spoke, you know, and is landing back, I'm sorry, he's from Allegheny County, is landing back in Allegheny County to raise his family, and was featured in Allegheny County Magazine. And so please help us to connect with local sites, is really what we're asking. If there's any way that we can partner and build more of a relationship in Garrett County, we are really hoping to do so. We think that we have a lot to offer. So thank you for your time. I certainly would love to entertain questions. I know my colleagues may have also something to offer as well.
Hi, what are the eligibility requirements to get into the program? Do you have to have, you have to be a certified RN, or what's required to get in?
Sure, it's a great question, and it is a graduate program, so they would need an undergrad degree typically in some type of healthcare science, because our prerequisite courses are things like chemistry, anatomy and physiology, biochemistry. So typically, it's wanting to be somebody who did their undergraduate in kind of preparing for the healthcare field. That being said, if they maybe graduated from an undergrad program and then decided that the PA world is their career path, they could certainly retake, you know, take those courses. They also would need a 3.0 GPA, so we do have a minimum GPA requirement as well. And then we also give additional points for service. Are they service-oriented? What do their leadership skills look like? Because we certainly want to, you know, to put folks in the community that are going to really rise to the occasion.
It must be very competitive. If you only take 25 and you have hundreds of applications, it must be a challenge.
It is.
Scoring those and picking the right people, I would think. And what's a typical salary for a PA?
Sure, so starting, it depends on the specialty, I will say. So in looking at a primary care, PA, starting right out of school, you're probably talking anywhere between $95,000 and $100,000 for a salary. And then, of course, the specialties, surgical specialties, would certainly even pay higher.
And what does the two-years schooling cost them?
About $70,000.
And are there scholarships or anything for them?
Very much so. So Dr. Gonzalez and, I'm sorry, Gonzaga, did you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, so Dr. Gonzaga actually did offer a scholarship to students. It is kind of giving preference to the local area. There's also a scholarship in Hagerstown, Dr. Muir, who's a neurologist, who also has a practice up in Cumberland as well, he has a foundation, and he's going to also start a scholarship, but there's several scholarships that are actually available with the university as well.
Yeah, I'm sorry to ask many questions.
No, please.
It seems like a really great program, and it's very, very interesting, and it does meet a need. I mean, if there aren't enough doctors, PAs are the next best thing, I guess. But our last question, are there, since you're drawing people from all over the country and you're getting these large numbers, there must be other schools, colleges that offer the same type of program?
Yes, so WVU does have a PA program as well.
Okay.
And then up in Pittsburgh, there's several programs in Pittsburgh. Down in Manchester, Virginia, is Shenandoah University. And then east yet of Hagerstown, as you go towards Towson, we are one of four programs actually in Maryland. So University of Maryland Eastern Shore has a program, Frostburg, of course, has the program, University of Maryland Baltimore has a program, and Towson has a program. Yes.
One last question.
Please, yes.
Are the people that come here for this program eligible for student housing at Frostburg?
No, they're not, but we do have a great partnership with AHEC West, and AHEC West has been very generous in offering our students housing if they are AHEC scholars, so we certainly encourage them to become very much involved in the AHEC community.
How much choice do they have where they're located after they complete their course?
So they don't have a lot of choice, so some of it we do because we know what their interests are, so we meet with them consistently through that first year, and we find out, okay, are you really loving dermatology? Well, then let's make sure that you get a dermatology elective. Or to the contrary, what do you find is challenging for you? Because that's a great setting to put them in as well. So if cardiology has been really challenging for you, then let's definitely get you a cardiology rotation, because that's really going to help you hone in on your skills before you get out there for practice.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you guys very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there age limits on how, I mean, would like Larry want to go do that?
We would welcome Larry. He's put your application in there.
So the oldest student I ever saw, 65, completed a program. I was 40 when I went back to school to become a PA. I practiced for 30 years and retired, and then I came out here to work with this.
That's great. Well, my guess is some of the older people might be a little more patient and caring than some of the younger people, and you're kind of mellow as you age. At least Larry did.
What Jim didn't tell you, my specialty is veterinarian medicine, so.
Thank you.
That's a harder job than some of the others.
Thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Garrett County Diversity Policy. Talked about this for a couple of months now. I have in front of me a resolution for Garrett County Government, a statement of diversity and inclusion. I'll read this and then entertain a motion to adopt it. Resolution 2021-7, Garrett County Government Statement on Diversity and Inclusion. Whereas Garrett County, Maryland is a diverse community, including diversity among its residents in race, ethnicity, religion, socioeconomic status, age, sexual orientation, gender, gender identification, national origin, or perceived national origin, immigrant, refugee status, veteran status, and disability. Whereas all members of the community who choose to live in Garrett County have the right to be treated fairly and to live their lives with dignity, free from discrimination or disparate treatment, and whereas the county understands that a healthy community is one in which all members of the community have an equity-based opportunity to access county services, participate in the public process, and feel safe and welcome in their community, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Garrett County Commissioners that the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County adopts. The Statement on Diversity and Inclusion. Garrett County strives to be a welcoming and inclusive place for all. We are committed to promoting respectful conduct, equitable service, diversity in our community. We condemn discrimination by or against residents, visitors, workers, county employees, or county businesses, and all that we do as a county government. We pledge to treat everyone fairly, respectfully, and without bias, regardless of their color, creed, religion, national origin, gender, marital status, familial status, immigration status, sexual orientation, age, income, or disability. We commit to building a welcoming environment throughout the county that is free from harassment, discrimination, and disparities. Our vision is that Garrett County will be welcoming and inclusive community that recognizes and honors diversity and is free from prejudice, harassment, bigotry, and hate, and our mission statement is to recognize the important value of diversity in our community, to encourage mutual respect, inclusivity, and further the enhancement of our community as one where cultural and physical diversity is celebrated as an important asset. We recognize the many facets of a diverse society may include but are not limited to race, religion, ethnicity, gender, socioeconomic level, mental and physical differences, age, and sexual orientation. If approved, this will be adopted this 20th day of July 2021 by the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County. Question. Do we have a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-7 on Statement on Diversity and Inclusion?
Make a motion to adopt the resolution.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion of second, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I will ask all of you to sign that. As part of that proclamation, the Commissioners will be establishing a committee tasked with conducting listening tours, looking into issues of diversity within the county, and reporting back to the Board. We are in the process of finalizing that, there'll be more to come on that, and that will be coming soon. Any comments?
I'll make a comment, it's a well-written statement.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right, and we are at the time in our meeting to accept public comment or questions, and does anyone in the public have any comment, other comments or questions? Thank you, Scott.
Sorry, I jumped in.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
So the committee is going to be how we operationalize that policy statement that you just adopted, right?
In essence, yes. And there'll be more to come on that, the actual charge and makeup of that community, we're actually finalizing now, so. Any other questions, comments?
I think it's wonderful.
I think it's wonderful. Thank you very much. And I look forward to progress in that area.
I do have one thing unrelated to this. I was approached by a concerned citizen about the status of the Swallow Falls Bridge. Most of you know that there's a temporary one-lane bridge there that's been there. The original bridge was declared structurally unsound, I think that was, Kevin, was that ten years ago, twelve years ago? No, it's more than that.
It's been longer than that, yeah.
Anyway.
That makes you want to go drive on it right now.
We've been, and so it's one lane, there's a lot of traffic goes, it's right, it's maybe a few hundred yards from entrance to Swallow Falls State Park, gets a lot of traffic. There are, in that neighborhood, I happen to live within about a mile there, there are a lot of farmers that have to travel that route to get to their property. It's, it's been long overdue, the replacement has been long overdue. The good news is that we've accumulated over time enough money to pay for it. We estimate, was it five million?
Five million, yeah.
It's going to be a very complex, complicated project because DNR owns the property at both ends, and because we're crossing over the river, there's issues with stormwater and contamination and all that sort of thing. What I really wanted to get to is that we, we have the money to do the, to replace the bridge with a, a permanent two-lane bridge. We're working closely with DNR on the permitting process, as close as we can work with DNR on the permitting process. And DNR is actually, as a result of us contacting them, DNR actually agreed just a couple of weeks ago to contribute a hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the design, and six hundred thousand dollars towards the construction of the bridge. So we're, long story short, we're working with DNR to finalize the design, the alignment of the bridge, the stormwater configuration, and some other things. But if, if all goes well, we should be able to start construction on it next summer?
Hopefully.
I said if, if all goes well. But I just want, I just wanted us to go on record that to let people know that we are working, we have been working on it, we are working on it, and there is a light at the end of the tunnel. Thank you.
And that we are dependent upon DNR's blessing because of the situation we're in with, and that, that is the delay, but we're working through that.
And we're trying to do it in a way, I should add, that would keep the temporary bridge open while we build the permanent bridge, so there'd be no disruption in traffic to the, to the park, or the other people that use that bridge. It'll be a big project, it'll make no, it'll be a big, big project.
Major project. Thanks for mentioning that. Any other comments? If not, the next meeting of Board of County Commissioners will be Monday, August the second, right here. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you all very much.
Another good job, Mr. Chairman.
Nobody wants to leave, it was so, you know.
Yeah.